I'd like to call this Board of Ed, regular Board of Ed meeting to order. Please rise for the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we go over this? Mr. Goodrich? Here. Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Flynn?
Delayed.
Mr. Cassidy?
Excused.
Mr. Stabler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wolf?
Present.
Mr. Sear?
Here.
Mr. White?
Delayed or excused.
Do you want to go over that?
We're supposed to start at the back of the LGI.
We need a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of particular individuals to discuss matters made exempt by federal and state law with regard to student matters.
The, on the record, it says the motion, oh, you changed it.
Yeah, I'll go over the revisions when we're done.
So.
Need a second?
Need a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Matt's going to begin with administrative update and Ken's is going to follow the information about the tax warrant.
Okay, so, we wanted to update the board and the community as a team, got some things we're working on and very excited about for this school year. First, we had a request just to, just to go over teaching positions that were either budgeted for or grant funded, that we are filling for this upcoming year or have filled for this upcoming year. So, I'll start with three class size reduction positions, one at Glennum, one at South Avenue, and one at Sargent. We are, those are all in place, those are, I think, were the first ones that we appointed back in May or June, and, and so those are all ready to roll. We had one special education position that we have filled. We also hired two elementary PE positions, that was to move the elementary level to a four-day special schedule. Every elementary student in every school, no matter what grade, will have two PE out of every four days, one art and one music. Library will still exist, it will still be full-time at each building, and students will go to library outside of that rotation, and so they'll go to library sort of in a more traditional way to focus on literacy skills and to check out reading material, but then they'll also visit the library to experience makerspace projects and other innovative kind of programming that we've been working on this summer and will continue to work on this year. So, we're really excited about that. So, in the last year's budget, we also had, I think, the way it reframed it was a Coda or another special education teacher. Coda is a certified occupational therapist assistant. After reviewing needs of the district this summer, we, working with Don Candello, our PPS director, we changed the, to a .6 OT instead of a full-time Coda, we feel like, and we have just posted for this, correct? And so, we feel like the .6 OT will better kind of meet the needs. One of the reasons being an OT is obviously it kind of works independently, Coda needs supervision, and what we need right now to meet the needs of students in the district is, is more OT. So, that's what we're going to do with that. And, in the super exciting news category, the grant that we won a few months ago from the state, part of the grant was for fourth grade instrumental music to get started, and we are, it looks like we're going to be able to start it. So, we posted for this position, we had some good applicants, and our hope is at the September 11th meeting, we will be appointing the fourth grade instrumental music person. So, they will not, fourth graders will not on September 12th, you know, kind of grab instruments and start playing. We're going to have this person work with the current elementary instrumental music teacher for a few weeks with the goal being to, we need to figure out what instruments we need to purchase, which are also in the grant, that, that funding, and, and we also just kind of want this person to see how it works in the elementary building. So, our hope is that fourth grade instrumental music is up and running by the end of October. So, we are really excited about that, to get that moving, so. And we are just about all staffed, staffed up for the school year, unless we have, like, you know, late resignations or something like that, we're, we're looking really good in terms of staffing for this school year. So, it is really exciting to see the grant really start coming to fruition with people applying and having committee interviews, et cetera, et cetera. We will just note that the interviews for that particular position, like we've been doing for most of our positions, have both internal stakeholders and external stakeholders as part of the process, and Celia was the chair of that hiring committee. All right, so, our theme with our administrative team this year is that we're really focusing on the themes of excellence, equity, and communication, and that the underlying foundation of our work is that we're trying to get out of our comfort zone. And so, the comfort zone is a place that is very easy to retreat to, and sometimes we spend way too much time there, and so, we're asking everybody on the administrative team to try to find ways this year to get out of their comfort zone, especially in ways that focus on developing a more equitable district, especially in ways that increases strong communication with both students, families, and, and staff members, and also ways to build a more excellent school district, and by excellent, I mean, a district where students are not only learning at high levels, but also being supported in a social emotional way as well. And so, we're going to try to model, practice what we preach, or model, so, although I, I try to be outside of my comfort zone a lot, it's always good to not sort of rest on last year's projects. And so, I'm going to start, and then members of the team are going to come in with what they're going to focus on. This is a workshop, so feel free to chime in with comments or questions, but these are just some things that I personally will be heading up this year. One is to create a student advisory council for the district. The student advisory council would meet with me and other administrators on a monthly basis. We will focus on students from Rambout and Beacon High School to be members. We'll get, the school year will get going for a couple of weeks, and I'll put out a call for students to apply to be members of that. We kind of want, obviously, a really diverse group of students for that, and so, that's what we'll be looking for. I think the main thing we'll be looking for in the application is just students who are willing to commit to meeting, and the meetings will be during the school day, and so, it won't be a difficulty for students to be a part of it. A huge task is creating a strategic coherence plan for the district and creating another committee, a strategic planning committee. I've spoken about that at previous board meetings, I won't get in depth with that right now, because I could probably go on forever about that, but that is work, even though I've been a part of it in many other places, it's a work, it's some work that definitely sort of puts us all on the leading edge. We're creating a new support structure for our principals and department heads, it seems kind of obvious, so I'm not going to spend a ton, ton of time on it, but we're going to continue having our big meeting structure where we all meet and discuss issues, but we will be meeting, the four of us will be meeting with individual principals and department heads on a either weekly or bi-weekly basis to, to deal with, you know, the small things that come up, but to do a weekly or bi-weekly reminder of, and sort of support the work of equity, excellence, and communication in the district. So, we asked all of our administrators to come up with what they want their work project goals to be for the year, and we want to spend all year supporting that work. So, a chunk of our Mondays and Fridays, we'll be meeting with department heads or principals to make sure they're supported in moving this work forward. Another area where the whole district will be moving towards this year is we're going to be creating, building leadership teams. Building leadership team is teachers, principal, or administrators, and parents that are focused on kind of long-range goals for the school. South Avenue School had a BLT, as they like to call it, last year, and so, Laura, Laura Cahill spoke about it with the administrative team, and we're going to be rolling that out this fall and asking for both parent volunteers and also looking for teacher leaders to join those teams, and teachers will receive a stipend to be a part of that work. It will feel a little bit different for folks, and I, I worked under the structure as a principal for 11 years. It could be the very same people that are involved with the PTO, but it's, it's sort of looking to, to create, you know, a, a long-range plan, long-range goals for the dis, or, excuse me, for the school, and to really try to sort of develop consensus around it and try to move the work forward, instead of it just coming from one or two people. Another area that I'll be deeply focused with, deeply focused with, excuse me, is facilitating the equity work in the district. We started that work this summer, our administrators did a day retreat here in Beacon, and then almost all of us attended a two-day conference in Ithaca focused on diversity and inclusivity. I'll be working with principals to support their teams, they're going to have teacher leaders focus on this work. I want, I want schools to have different areas they focus on, but I, I want families to feel welcome, students to feel safe, and us as a district to focus on working against race, ethnicity, gender, disability as predictors of student success, or really student participation in the things that we offer in the district. So, I'm going to continue with the community engagement. I think a lot of superintendents do what I did during the first year, my goal is to continue it at that high level for all the years that I'm here. So, so it may look a little bit different this year, I may be more targeted, it may, probably will be focused on developing the strategic plan, but I plan on having a similar number of community forums that I had last year, and also looking at ways of developing a deeper online community engagement with folks as well. And then I think an area where I was lacking a little bit in last year was I spent a lot of time engaging with the community, I need to spend more time also engaging with staff. And so, having open forums for teachers and staff to talk with me about a variety of issues and creating some more structured ways, like having, we had an advisory group with the Beacon Teachers Association last year, but me making sure that it happens on a monthly basis, things like that, I'm excited to really move that work forward. So, you see some themes here, a lot of it is still listening, but it's moving the district forward to be more strategic, to focus on equity work, to also focus on beyond the listening part, is really developing partners with people, whether it's our students, whether it's our families, whether it's our employees, that we really start to engage at a high level with all our stakeholders. So, these are areas that I'm going to be focused on this year, and then members of my team are going to talk about areas that they're going to focus on as well, and so, next up is Anne Marie.
Are you taking questions during, or?
Yeah, sure.
So, just one question about the, the parents who would be part of the advisory. I think that having been part of two different PTOs, the common thing is that there's the same people who sort of show up everywhere, they definitely develop a relationship with people in the building, so I think their voices are, are heard. I would be really curious to see, you had talked about the students would be during school day, so there would be no barriers, I'd like to hear more, or for you guys to go forward and think about working parents and parents who haven't typically been involved in how you would engage them.
Yeah. We have some fleshing out with this to do, we spent time at our administrative retreat starting to talk about, like, how we want to roll this out, so that's why we pushed it a little bit into the fall, like, I probably see us rolling this out in October, just to give us a little time, so we're at least a little bit consistent. I, I had a really great experience in my previous district, I created a special education advisory group that had a, a large number of parents or, or caregivers on it, and a large number of staff. One of the things we did was we, we tried to have the meetings, I know there's, you know, the same strategies, and sometimes they work and sometimes they don't, but we tried to move the meetings around a little bit, and we also tried to sort of change the time a little bit, too, and I think more than anything, people appreciated the effort and tried to come to meetings more. And the other thing I think that made people really come to those meetings and participate at a high level is they felt like their voice was making a difference, and so, and so we want, you know, we want the same thing with this work. So, you know, it's, it's an experiment, it's something that we haven't done a lot of here in Beacon, but I think it's, it's definitely the next step that we need to take. We, you know, we need to be more involved in just that sort of this district level, like, every, every school or department needs to have almost like a, an advisory group of their own, and so, so, you know, we're excited to get it started. At the end, if you have questions of any of us, I mean, anytime during it, ask a question, but at the end, if you're like, oh yeah, I want to ask Matt's, just, you know, it's informal, so just follow. All right, Anne Marie.
Okay. So, our mission on the support services side is to support the people doing the work in the buildings and the work at district level. So, I start with food service department. Karen and I have had major conversations on sustainability, on being more green, and trying to eventually eliminate all the non-recyclable items, so that's a goal of both of ours to do. Our facilities department will start planning the next capital project, I know that sounds, that would make Mike happy, although he's not here, but it will, it'll be here before we know it, and so, we wanted to see what the building level needs are and what people are thinking about. We're also going to facilitate a recycling program in all the schools, and we've talked about that, and we've had a, a survey, we've had, we applied for a grant, so that's kind of installing it a little bit, but we are going to roll that out, Anthony is on board with that as well, so that's, we've, we've heard that from a lot of stakeholders in the district. Our transportation department, which are always very reactive, so I, you know, we all field a lot of phone calls at the beginning of the year about transportation, so Ron and I will talk about being a little bit more proactive and thinking outside the box, and not breaking rules and not doing things that we're not allowed to do, but, but kind of stretching the rules a little bit and trying to be a little bit more open-minded about things. He and I have started these conversations this year, just about, you know, letting kids ride on a bus, again, not breaking the rules, but being a little bit more open-minded, so we're going to work hard on that for this year. Also, increased field trips and other educational experiences, so I, you know, I heard that loud and clear when we were having meetings with the principals, it's an important thing for children to get out of the classroom and learn in other ways, so we're going to think outside the box on that as well, and assist the building level principals in getting that done.
Anne Marie, where are we with it? I know we were trying to get rid of the trays for lunch, and these, but I will.
In its totality, it would be a big change, we're going to gradually work towards that, I'm hoping by the end of the year, we can totally eliminate that. Karen and I have to kind of work on it. She has a couple of different proposals, some of them, some of them were, we have dishwashers in some of the buildings, so we may start there, and then the, the buildings that don't have the major equipment, instead of buying something like that, we will go to a more green concept. So, in fact, I have a meeting with her this week, we're going to start the process and talking about it, because it is, it is an issue. Dutchess County will eventually have us recycle everything, and it'll get to the point, so again, we're trying to be proactive, so we want to try to do it before we're mandated not to.
This one also, during the next budget cycle, may be just something that we need to just straight up support in the budget. I think this one, I think for a lot of people, it's just reaching this thing that we just, we just need to, you know, make happen, so.
Maybe in conversation with the county, maybe they'll, maybe you can pitch it to them, they've got some funds, is it sure as a pilot, funded as a pilot?
Well, we are hoping that this grant, because it's, it's facilities and it's also food service, so, it got a little bit delayed, we're hoping, because that would give us a little bit of funding to kind of jumpstart the program, and then we can sustain it through the budget later, so. If not, we're going to start the program without it, we're not going to not do it if we don't get the grant funding.
Point on the dishwasher issue, some of our schools have and some don't, that may be something that we can remediate in the next capital program, at least we should be taking a look at it.
That may not be the preferred way, people would rather have recyclable trays than, because that, having the dishwasher requires trays and things that you can wash and staff and, you know, so it might be a better option just to go the recycling way, so we're not sure yet. For the short term, we can use what we have, but there's always, you know, costs related to that, too, so.
I'm also not sure the recycling is immune from some problems in that industry. China has rejected a lot of our garbage that we like to call recyclables, and that's where most of it goes, and they've put the hammer down, things might change.
See, so none of the, none of the options are 100% without some, some planning, so. Okay, Celia.
Thank you. Thanks. So, for leadership out of my newly minted office of human resources and accountability systems, things that we'll focus on this year, one is important aspect as it relates to human resources, the creation of feedback loops for the purpose of supporting our school level administrators and department heads with APPR and professional learning needs. So, specifically, this is about creating ways that we systematically look at through quarterly feedback and review cycles of what the growth and development looks like for our probationary teaching staff across the district and within the schools, as well as what we're learning about where the strengths and the assets of all of our staff at the school lie as it relates to professional practice, and what the new and emerging needs may be within schools and then across, across schools. And when we do that in a systematic way with support from all of us here as part of the executive team, what we'll get is a really robust system of supervision and professional growth support. So, that's the next step of this process for us this coming year. In addition to that, as a part of accountability systems, this is about how we align and build integrity across all of our data systems. And so, continuing to work this year in a purposeful and intentional way to break down some of the silos of all the various reporting mechanisms we have and the various data systems that we're using to work in collaboration with bringing together our director of technology, with our director of pupil personnel, with myself, with Mr. Wright, with our related staff that support that, so that we can make usable data systems that will support our school level leaders. A huge component of this is the building out of the equity report cards that we've talked a lot about, and again, this is to make, one, for us to have it as a district-wide tool, and one that we'll continue to use as part of the work that we're doing in the diversity committee of the district, but also so that each of our schools and their school level equity teams, as well as their building leadership teams, have the resources at hand, so that it helps to inform the, the decisions and the thinking that they're doing at a school level as it relates to moving forward their school level goals. And so, that will be part of the leadership of my work, of how we make those, make those elements accessible and meaningful and visibly useful for, for many stakeholders. Another aspect of the work is really to build on and initiate celebration and recognition rituals for, to celebrate our staff milestones of, you know, milestones in terms of successful service to the district, the attainment of longevity milestones, the, but really, so that's one piece of it, and we do do that to some extent with some of our end-of, end-of-year district celebrations. But another aspect that's really important, that's part of the development of all of our, our human capital and our staff, our staff systems, is how we begin to celebrate and recognize innovative and promising practices. So, if that's work that we have, that we value at all levels, that we want our district to continue to move forward in, in, in an innovative approach, to really redesign what 21st century learning environments look like for us here in the district, we also want to be able to celebrate our teachers and our administrators and staff at all levels for being risk-takers, for going out and, you know, being part of some out-of-the-box work that we're doing, and to be able to continue to empower those across the district. And that's really, it's really important that we celebrate what those achievements are and what the pathways to, you know, kind of forging in new directions that benefit our students and families are. And so, that's part of the work that will be, will be happening from my office and to, in support across the district. A huge aspect of our work this year is going to be to help support the transition for us as a district into what's affectionately known as ESSA, but it's the Every Student Succeeds Act, the accountability requirements and systems. It is the next iteration from the, from the federal No Child Left Behind that was, that was enacted into, into law two years ago, and so, at, we have a state-level plan that is, and there will be more information I'd love to share with all of you to come at an upcoming board, board workshop, because there will be information coming out from the states with regard to districts and the new system at, in, in early October. And so, part of this work is to be mindful of what those accountability systems look like, to not get hyper-focused on compliance as a task in and of itself, but for us to be able to know those requirements, to be able to use the information as a guiding point and a litmus of where we are in relation to where we desire to go, but also to be able to ensure that we're keeping focus on what we've prioritized as the critical work of the district, and that those two things are not necessarily counterintuitive to each other. But the system of the overhaul of the new accountability system has changes in it, and so, more information to come, but part of my work will be helping our schools and our school leaders navigate through what that means for, for each of the schools, as well as for us as a district. Last, in, 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 in the vein of how we're increasing all of our engagement and communication and feedback, will be that Ms. Corderoni and I will co-facilitate an HR advisory council of our internal stakeholders, and so, aspects of personnel management, of human resources, on the, on the personnel staffing certification and employment end of it, as well as payroll, really are, are interdependent of each other, and this is about being able to create ways for us to hear what, what our new or emerging needs or things that we can inform, how we make all of the work more efficient and effective and more streamlined, and so, that's work that we'll be starting up this year as well. I'll pass then on to then Mr. Wright.
So, for my office, it's, this year is about bringing the curriculum to life. I think that over the past few years, we've worked to try to get our curriculum aligned to standards and to also ensure that, that, that each, each class on, on a grade was doing, you know, similar activities within, within the curriculum. So, now, you know, it's about bringing it to life. What's been great over the past, over this past summer is that we really began to look at science, at our science curriculum. You know, it's with the new standards, the new New York State science learning standards, it's not about just doing, you know, a learning science anymore, it's about doing science, you know, we want to create learners who are really engaged in the process of science, you know, and understanding concepts, and including technology into the, into the work as well. So, this summer, you know, we had the opportunity to really begin honing in on our elementary curriculum. We bought, we, we put curriculum teams together, and we tapped into the, the expertise and knowledge of one of our administrators, Cassandra Orsak Glennum, who's certified, a certified science teacher, and she's helped with the science curriculum for K-5 schools, pre-K-5 school. What we did this summer, actually two weeks ago, is we, we developed a unit for each, for each class, for each grade, and the purpose of it is to have teachers begin to facilitate the lessons within a unit and to come back together to, to talk about what we've seen, what we've noticed, so therefore, we'll know we're on the right track in terms of aligning our curriculum to the new standards. We've also worked with TEQ Tech, which is a company that, that, that we purchased a lot of our sm-. that, that, that we purchased a lot of our SMARTboards from in the past. We work with them, and they're in the process of creating, creating STEM and STEAM curriculum for, for schools throughout, throughout the country. We are, we're trying to get in on the ground end of that, so that we're able to be the first to work with this, with this company. And in doing so, what we are doing, what we are able, what we hope to be successful in doing is to create, have our library media specialists take part in curriculum planning for STEM and STEAM. So right now, we're in the process of creating a framework for grades three to five STEM and STEAM curriculum for our library media specialists. And then next year, we want to phase it down to grades pre-K through two. And at our middle school, we are collaborating much more with Beacon Institute this year. And with that being said, Clarkson University will also be part of the process. You know, as you know, two summers ago, or last summer, we started with the science camp for our middle school students. We did that again this summer, but now we're bringing them into the school day. There are a couple of proposals that they have brought forth to us that we will be taking part of this, this school year. In addition to that, we've had our, our middle school science teachers work with Clarkson University to create curriculum aligned to the New York State Science Learning Standards. We went back and forth over, during the, during the spring months, trying to determine if it was best to purchase curriculum or create curriculum. And the teachers, to their credit, decided that it would be best, you know, to create curriculum. So like I said, we collaborated with, with Beacon Institute and Clarkson University.
Eric, I have a question about that. So when we've done the summer camp in the past, that's so great, and it did reach a limited number of students. Is this something that's going to touch on every student, every class regardless of?
Yes, yes. Because it's going to be, it's going to be included in our curriculum, grade six through eight. Yes.
Do you feel you have enough partners in this new project?
Are you talking about at the elementary, the elementary level?
At whatever level, in all the levels, I would say. You, sorry, maybe it's Mike. Do you feel like you have enough partners? I know you're partnering with Clarkson, which is, which Beacon is to, is, is run under. You need more partners, yes?
Potentially, yes. But one of the things that we want to make sure that we do first and foremost is to make sure that we, that there's a scaffold curriculum pre-K all the way to eight. You know, and if we bring in too many partners in this work without really having a plan, what will happen is that, you know, it won't be consistent.
Okay. I mean, I, I, I mean, I think we do have, already have, with the Hudson Valley seat, the front of the table. I mean, that's also a science, this science component to that. I definitely feel you should add that also as another feather to the cap here. And I was gonna say something else in general for all three things, but, you know, I, I'm gonna channel Mike, you know, that when we have successes, that we should celebrate them, we should advertise them.
Absolutely. Yes. That's, you'll see that later on. In terms of social studies, as you know, a couple of years ago, we actually purchased a Putnam, Northern Westchester BOSI's Integrated Social, Social Studies Curriculum. And there was a component that was missing. Fortunately, we have Mike Keely with us this year. We're working to bring in the Discovery Streaming Plus video service, which will then allow our teachers to access the part of the curriculum that was missing. What that'll do is it'll, it'll make it more interactive for our students, and thus much more engaging. We're, we're hoping to have that video streaming service within the next few weeks. And that's actually K through eight.
Is that something that we were paying for and we couldn't access?
Yes.
Okay.
Because you needed a subscription. And so what we did is we looked at one of the video streaming programs that we had that wasn't being utilized, and we just phased it out. In terms of ELA, one of the, the good things that I'm super excited about this year is that we, we will be putting in assessments and get grades six through seven this year. We started with grade six last year, but grade seven this year, that are aligned towards being done in grades three to five. They were not using, in the past, they were not using the Fuentes and Pernell Assessment, so there wasn't, they didn't have an alternate way to assess whether or not students were reading at grade level. This will be the support that they need to make sure that that happens. One of our Assistant Principals, Laurie Edelman, will be training on grade seven this year. She trained grade, grade six last year. So it'll be, what makes it so, so good is the fact that now students, students whom already have been assessed in grades three through five would now continue that work in grades six through seven, six and seven this year. That's important because now we will have ways to ensure that when students go to RTI, or even when they're receiving academic intervention services, that we all speak in the same language. So field trips, as Anne Marie spoke about earlier, we want to ensure that all students have means to attend trips, you know, and that's our role at the district office as principals, informers of, you know, field trips that they are wanting to, you know, have students attend. That's of course aligned to the curriculum. You know, we want to do our part to ensure that it takes place, you know, within reason. We want to make sure that it has a connection, it connects the curriculum to the real world. You know, when students are, are having those opportunities, that makes it that much more engaging. So that's what we want to make sure happens this year. So on the student services side, the Code of Conduct, you know, as Dr. Landau mentioned earlier, there are some revisions that are needed to the Code of Conduct. And that's one thing that I'm super excited about taking, you know, taking the lead on this year. We want to ensure that restorative practices are, are really a part of the new Code of Conduct. We want to make sure that our students are having opportunities to be brought back in, you know, without, or before, I should say, not even just brought back in, but that they have opportunities to, alternative measures as opposed to just being disciplined from a punitive lens. You know, in addition to that, we want to assure that our curriculum is, that it's not disproportionate in terms of the manner in which students are being suspended. That's, that's really important. And the way that you do that is just looking at categorized infractions, you know, from, from, from having a range from minor to major. And therefore, when you have that, you're able to then determine where do, where do the infractions fall, and then you're able to support kids the way that they're needed to be supported. But in terms of the restorative piece, you know, it's about educating students. And I think that if we do a more effective job in doing that, we will then have less, less infractions taking place throughout the course of the year. So, Mr. Zhang, you, you asked, you talked about just, you know, informing people of the good that's being done. One of the things that I want to focus on this year is I want to make sure that as we bring the curriculum to life, that I'm using a platform to really celebrate, you know, what our teachers are doing, but more important, what our students are doing. You know, we're a community of learners, and I think that we really need to make sure that that's happening, because there's some great work that's been taking place over the course of the years. And, you know, we need to acknowledge our students and our staff for the work that they're doing.
Do you have a timeline for the Code of Conduct and any revision? Is that, will be presented to the board at any specific date?
I didn't put a date to it yet, because it's something that I don't want to rush. It's a sensitive, it's a sensitive topic, but more importantly, if something that is done correctly, it is going to take some time, because we really have to look at, I think we need to look at some models that are out there. And we have to really educate, you know, all of our community about, you know, different ways that could be more effective to supporting our students. You know, in addition to that, I want to make sure that, you know, every voice is heard, you know, in this process. So it's, it's going to take some time.
Is there a way to update us on the work that's done? I think that's probably important, what we're learning, because I, I think that obviously we want students to feel like this is moving in the right direction for them, but I think we need to communicate the direction that's moving in, and that's our goal.
Absolutely, yes. And I want to make sure in that process that I am talking with students, you know, I'm talking with staff, I'm talking with the community, you know, just so that I can get a real feel, you know, for what's out there.
One thing that I forgot to mention, I'll be working on with Eric and Celia, is the, the other part of the grant, the exploration into starting the Second World Language. Currently, we just do Spanish, and so that will be a big project for us this year too, because the, the goal, the way the grant was written, the, what, what our desire in the grant was is, was to, to, to have Mandarin added, but that it would be for the next school year. So that's something that I'll be working on all year, this year too. Any other questions for us?
I think it would, in general, be great to have some sort of mid-year update as to how the goals are progressing and where we are. So it's hard work.
Definitely.
Thank you.
All right.
No, I think I have it.
Okay, I have a few slides. On the board agenda, we are asking the board to vote on the tax warrant. So I just wanted to give a little update. At this meeting, when we do the budget, we give you an estimate of where the taxes will be. But now I have all the information to do the warrant, so I just want to go through a couple of things with the board and with the public. So as you remember, we had asked you on, in May, to vote for the budget and the bus proposition. And our levy increase for just the budget was 3.67%. And we, we added an additional 0.2%, because as you remember, with the buses, we finance it over five years to match the state aid. So it's a 0.2, 0.20%. So the total is 3.87% levy. There has been some conversations, I know some of the board members have been getting an email about the levies, so I thought I would do just a little bit of impact. When tax cap calculation, when the legislation came out, everyone called it the 2% tax cap. And it's not as simple as that, and I just want to maybe talk about some things that actually made, why Beacon was allowed to go up to 3.87%. There's, there's several calculations. The one most important for Beacon this year was the tax-based growth factor. And the definition of that is a measure of the change in real property, and it's due to physical and quantity changes, so construction and capital improvements, which would definitely affect Beacon this year. In fact, Beacon's tax-based growth factor was the highest in Dutchess County this year. So what that does is it allows the levy to increase based upon these facts. The other, the allowable growth factor is the 2% confusion. So you do the lesser of 2% or the change in inflation. The change of inflation was a little bit above 2, so they make it 2. So you're allowed to grow the levy from the prior year by both the tax-based growth factor and the allowable growth factor. So for Beacon, that was a very positive increase, and that's why we were able to increase the levy more than we had done in the previous years. Yes.
So are you saying that if somebody develops a piece of property, or, I mean, like, what, 5,000, 537,000 pieces of dollars worth of property, that, that property itself is not the one that's paying the extra levies, distributed among everyone?
I'll get, I'll get to that. I'll get to that, because I'm going to show you where we are as far as the tax rate and where we are as, as an average homeowner. So you'll see how it impacts. Just a reminder that we allocate 2.5 million of excess fund balance when we're doing, and reserves when we're doing the budget calculation. And in 1819, we're using 200,000, a little above that, of the tax reduction reserve. That's the last bit of the tax reduction reserve. We have used all of it. And, but we've systematically used it, we need to use it within 10 years, we're about eight, so we're, we're pretty close to being done, but that's the last piece of it. Tax reduction reserve, as you remember, was the proceeds of Old Beacon High School. When you sell property, you need to put it in a reserve, and you need to systematically use it to reduce the tax levy, which we have done over the last eight years. So these are the changes in assessments, just to give you some kind of perspective from last year to this year. So Beacon, Fishkill, and Wappingers also are an increase in assessed values. So assessed values are not only the change in your personal home that got reassessed and you're paying more, it's for more properties that are on the tax roll. And I'll show you how that impacted the taxes. So these are the tax rates for Homestead, which would be the homeowners, 1819 versus 1718. And as you will see, 1819, the tax rate per thousand is less than 1718. So this is the second year where the tax rate has been less than the previous year. Star exemptions, I just showed this slide to kind of show you that the star exemption just systematically decreases every year. So that always still has an impact on what your taxes will be. So for the city of Beacon, again, we always use the same median assessed value. I think next year in the budget, I'll look at that again, but to try to give you an impact of what I, we presented in budget and what we're presenting here. If you have that median home value house with the current star, you have a tax reduction of $69 from last year. In the town of Fishkill, with their median assessed value home and current year's star, it would be a reduction of $91. And in Wappingers, same with the median assessed of 350, 500 with star, it's a reduction of 83. So again, this is the second year where we've had a reduction in, in tax rate, and then, which resulted in a reduction in taxes. Okay, now go ahead.
But the median that you're presenting, like, for example, Wappingers, we don't have a big piece of Wappingers. Are you saying that that median represents all Wappingers or just the percentage?
That is the median in Wappingers in, in our, in our district.
Okay. So that's very specific.
Because we run, we run the tax reports just, we just have the tax information from our district on the tax program.
And then, so is my question about, so let's say, for example, property X, Y, and Z was developed, and their property increases 200%. That allows for the growth factor to go up, but that growth factor is distributed among more property owners?
So the growth factor is something that's put out by New York State Taxation and Finance. So it's based upon real property tax information, and it's just, it's a rate, it's a percentage. When you bring in more properties onto the tax rolls, you're basically taking the same amount of levy, because the levy stays the same, it's what we talk about at the budget, and you're spreading it out over more properties. So that was, that's causing some of this to go down, some of your, the tax rate to go down. So it's, it's kind of two different things. I think you're trying to put them together. The, the tax-based growth factor allows us to increase our levy, because we are having more properties coming into our school district. It just allows us to be higher. For example, last year, our levy increase was about 1.5. So we went from 1.5 to 3.87. That was part of it, it allowed the levy to grow by 500,000. But when you do the levy, you, you take all of the assessed values across, so you saw all those three municipalities had increases, you take the levy and you spread it out over all the taxpayers in the city of Beacon School District.
So I, I know I'm oversimplifying, but it sounds like it's a yes. It sounds like that...
You and I think differently, so that's why I'm having a hard time. Go ahead, ask me again.
I mean, you know, let's say the levy was 100, hypothetically, 100,000, and it goes up to 120,000, because property X, Y, and Z increased, was able to bring in more property, which means that we could, their, their, their tax value is 20,000, let's say. So now we're at 120. But, so there's a growth factor of whatever that 20, extra 20,000 creates, but that doesn't get charged to the 20, that gets charged to the whole 120.
So what I think you're thinking of, the tax-based growth factor has to do just with the levy calculation. So all of that, all that does is allow the levy to be increased, right? So that's the levy side of it. Properties coming on is how we distribute the levy. So I think, I, I know what you're, you're saying, but the... So I think, I know what you're saying, but the growth factor is only, is only used in the tax cap calculation, so it just allows it to grow. If we didn't have that, our levy increase would have been a lot smaller, but it allows Beacon City School District to increase the levy, to raise more taxes, to allow us to do a lot of the things that we did in the budget because we were able to do that.
So if I own property C, I am not one of that, I am not one of those new properties that came online, am I affected by the growth factor?
You are.
Positively or negatively?
You are, you're affected by the growth factor because the levy is more than what you would normally have been paying, but you're also positively influenced because we're basically keeping your taxes, your taxes are actually going down a little bit because there's more properties, there's more people to pay in the same amount of the levy.
So you're saying I would pay less than 2%?
Well, you would pay less, period. So you're, you're trying to combine two different calculations?
Oh, yeah, I am. So if those properties never came online, I would only pay 2%. So, but if those properties now that came online, am I paying more than 2%?
You would pay, you would get some kind of tax-based growth factor, but it wouldn't be as much as what it is.
Yeah.
So it's possible, despite those numbers, for an individual taxpayer to find that their taxes went up versus last year. If, for example, there was some change in that particular assessment that you put on a deck, that would throw those numbers off, you could probably wind up paying more if they raised your personal assessment for that property. If the class that you're in changed relative to the other classes, for example, single-family home versus duplexes and three-family or beyond, and there's, of course, the factor of the homestead and the non-homestead, which is in effect in our district for these municipalities, wouldn't that make a difference if they changed the ratio between the homestead and the non-homestead?
The non-hom, the ratio between homestead and non-homestead is a three-part calculation, and you have to use the average of the two. I did see the non-homestead rates decrease as well, maybe not to the proportion of homestead, but there is a way of, you have to do it the exact same way all the time. Your comment about a personal assessment is correct. If you have an older home and you've lived in it a very long time and you're reassessed, you may see a tax increase. For people who are just recently bought their home and their assessments kind of stayed the same, you may actually see a reduction or a break even kind of thing. So it is, it is kind of individual. It's hard to show all that on the screen, so that's why we use a median. But you will have certain, actually, some people's taxes will go down much more than what I showed, and some will go up. So it's kind of, that's kind of the average is what I'm trying to show.
Is there? Thank you for putting all this together. This is complex.
And, but I'm hoping it's helpful because I know that it's a difficult situation.
It is, it is helpful, I imagine. I may repeat some of the questions that Anthony and Greg are saying. I think from my perspective, I've heard from people in the community who felt like they saw, they understood a 2% cap, and then these numbers came around and it's larger. Is there any public app information where people can access and look up to see whether or not their property was affected to go larger, over 2% or under 2%? Is there a way that they can find out where they fit exactly in that?
So they'll, there, it's really going to be, for an individual person, it would be basically affected by their assessment. So when they receive a change in assessment, they will see, their taxes will be impacted, usually if you're getting a change in assessment. If you want to hear more, people want to do research on the tax cap calculation, there is a lot. If they Google it, and they go to New York State Taxation and Finance and the Controller's Office, there's information there. During the budget process, I give the big, long calculation of it, which is very confusing, and I try to make it simple, but it's not simple. So it's, it's, we've just, I know the board has gotten some emails from some taxpayers, that's why I wanted to try to address it here. I answered some of the taxpayers by referring them back to prior meetings where we really kind of delved in a little bit more about it. But, you know, people who have gotten reassessed, who don't agree with their reassessment and they challenge it to the municipality where they live, there's also claims. So tax sociaries, when we talk about the audit and the financials, you'll talk, we have reserves for tax sociaries where people actually go and argue their assessments. So I know that there are some people out there that are not happy with some of their reassessments that are going on.
Is all of this information available online?
I will put this PowerPoint on, and there's also, all of the PowerPoints during the budget presentation are online, so that you can see that and you can kind of follow it through if they don't want to watch, you know, the meetings, their PowerPoints are on, but I'll put this up tomorrow.
Great, thanks.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I'd like to refer to it not as the 2% tax cap, but as the nominal 2% tax cap to clue you in that there are all those wrinkles, as you describe.
Okay.
Okay. So just want to review the agenda. There are a few things that were changed. First, the reasons for going into executive session earlier changed. We removed a real estate discussion and added student matter. The tax warrant document was revised as 11.1. 12.10 resolution language was added. 13.01, non-instructional addendum added. 13.02, instructional addendum added, and I think that's it. Are there any other questions about the agenda? Okay, so moving on, are there any student or school presentations? Any parent groups open to the public? There's no one signed up, but does anyone have a public comment? Superintendent's report?
I'll be really brief since we gave kind of a long presentation tonight. We were just really excited, excited to get started. We have all of our staff coming together Thursday morning in the theater here in Beacon High School. I'll be talking about some of our focus areas and themes of the year. And then Tuesday, and then, excuse me, the rest of the day, teachers will be meeting in grade-level teams and in departments on some of the work that Eric was discussing, moving that curriculum work forward. The teachers who worked on curriculum over the summer have a chance to share. Tuesday is a really valuable day for us because that's the day the teachers are all, mostly all in their school buildings, having their first faculty meeting of the year, going over, you know, school focus areas and angles and whatnot, and also just the business stuff that you have to cover before the most important day, our students are coming back, next Wednesday, and we are very, very excited to get going. So I think the team here knows that I pretty much just want all this stuff to happen, you know, tomorrow, and I'm really excited to get the year started, but, and Thursday, we're ending the day with a little ice cream party in front of the Beacon High School for our staff, and I think a lot of the board's able to come over, so thank you for helping us out with that. And if you have a scoop?
Oh, be aware of scoops. You may have.
We were starting to do the math, and we may need some, so, but thank you, and we're just excited to get started.
Thanks. So committee reports, board comments, James?
Policy committee, we met on Wednesday. I was nominated and elected to be the chair of that committee. We, the highlights, we looked at the charging school meals policy, which we will be voting on tonight. We moved to pass first, take it to a second read, to a vote, but we decided to look at two future provisions, one of which is to, something that was going with the legal language, of being able to forgive students past debt who have, who qualify for free or reduced meal programs. And a second is to see if it's technically feasible to add the ability for any parent who's enrolled in an auto pay to be able to donate their year-end balance to any families. We're to investigate that and revisit. Another thing which I wanted to just bring to the board is we discussed a policy about the notice of meetings. One of the things that came up is in the language, we talked about electronically distributed to the public. We brought up the idea of using the school, the district's email system to be able to distribute information about board meetings. Matt said that he would look and see if that's feasibly, technically feasible, and what's involved with that. And I also wanted a temper check, a temper check with the board to see if that's something we are interested in.
Would that be like an opt-in thing?
Yeah, I was going to say, if it's an opt-in, I think that would be really great. I think the downside, if we blanket everybody, is just that we stop noticing important things. But I think if somebody has a particular interest, like policy or wellness or something, that they, there's a way without it being too much of a, for them to opt in, I think that would be...
Yeah, we will check. Our next meeting, I put forward, I just suggested a date of Wednesday, September 26th. We'll wait to hear back from the rest of the committee to see if that works. And we have, the only thing I know that's certainly on the agenda is we're going to be reviewing policies concerning homeschool students' access to Beacon School District facilities and extracurricular.
At that September 26th?
At the, the date is to be determined.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting. That's all.
Craig?
Well, we're past, almost past the month of August, which is your primary vacation month, and hopefully, a couple of committees, three of them that I serve on, will be able to set some kind of date soon so we can get back in stride. Mike's not here tonight for facilities and operations. I think we had some difficulties with trying to schedule over the month of August, but as far as I know, things are moving along with the staff level and the consultants. Public relations advocacy legislative, we need to set our first meeting in this newly updated and revised committee, so we're looking to, to other members of that to see if we can nail something down before the week is up, for sometime in September. And other than that, I'd be happy to see schools start again and the rhythm of education resume.
Flora?
I think we've set some tentative dates for the wellness committee, starting September 26th, so it'll be monthly on Wednesdays at 4:00. We'll also work on getting childcare, which will be helpful for anybody who wants to join. That's all I know in terms of the wellness committee. I think, Anthony, you're going to speak.
I attended the policy committee meeting on Wednesday. Looking forward to working with that group to make some decisions, and especially the reviewing of the homeschool policies. I'm interested in our discussion on that at our next meeting. And I am committed for September 26th. You can put me down.
Okay.
Good evening. So the, what I'm also working on for the policy committee is some sort of a crosswalk between the old policies and the new policies, and then also trying to cross off the ones that have been replaced already, so that we can see what's left. It also makes it easier for parents to, if they want to look at the policies, to figure out which ones are active and which ones are not. So that's all in the policy committee work. The, also for diversity, at the last meeting I mentioned about, maybe I didn't, the potentially having the first meeting is having meetings at the second month of the, second Tuesday, second Thursday of the month, but that one for September might be too soon, so I was looking at October, but I'm open to suggestions from the rest of the committee if they want to be sooner than that. In the meantime, you know, I would like to circulate the draft from Lucy, I'm sorry, Ms. Lucky? Lisa Lucky, I think?
Liza.
Liza Lucky, thank you. And potentially maybe ask her to give a presentation if she's amendable to the diversity committee on that. Also, at the last meeting on diversity, before the brokering for the summer, we talked about doing some presentations for parents. And I'm still getting, trying to get my handle on who are the officers of the different BTOs, but I am trying, I'm still looking for what we did back in May 27, 2009, which was a, it was a four-hour event with multiple tracks of different presentations. I don't have a program from that. I believe I found some survey results, and obviously, since it's 2009, it's maybe a little dated, but definitely something I think, instead of reinventing the wheel, something that we can bring back again. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Anthony, if I could just, there's no urgency necessarily in having a sooner diversity meeting, except only, I might suggest a little early just because myself, and I don't speak for Flora, but I don't know if we're as in sync with what's been happening in the previous meetings. So I feel like, you know, if we wait another, wait till October, I'll really be able to jump in the next meeting, because you know what I mean?
That's fair. So I'll look at, I'll look at some dates.
Yeah, you can.
Okay. All right, thanks.
And I, we don't have any dates for the curriculum committee yet, so nothing to report there. I did want to just tell folks that the Dutchess County School Boards Association has a pretty interesting speaker that they're having on November 3rd, in Terrytown's Dinner, and this guy, John Marrow, is speaking, who is talking about school reform, and it looked really interesting to me. I'm definitely going to go. If anyone else wants to go, let me know. And also, this is jumping way ahead, but why not? January 12th, they are having the legislative breakfast, which Kristen and I attended last year in Spilberg. And it was, most of the legislatures, legislators sent representatives, which, so that wasn't that interesting, but it was really interesting to hear other school board members speak about what their districts were facing, so mark your calendars. And we don't have any unfinished business tonight. We have to approve the tax warrant, and that's a roll call vote, so I have a motion to approve the tax warrant for the 2018-19 school cap tax collection.
Motion to approve the tax warrant for 2018, 2019.
Second.
I have, I have a request. Can you spell my name right?
Is your name that, or is your name?
On the roll call.
We can make that happen. I apologize that it's misspelled. I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm kind of used to it, but it kind of sucks that I'm third year.
My grandmother gave Sara a bracelet.
Sorry. Sorry. I catch that.
Do you do the roll call vote?
No, I'll call it. It's better, Ben?
I'm sorry, I missed a question.
It's that you are voting in favor or against?
We just have to do it individually for the...
Yes. Mr. Case Layel?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mr. Rakowski? Ms. Stadler?
Yes.
Mr. Singh?
Yes. Without the age.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Ms. Hewer?
Yes.
So that's seven, is there a favor?
Great, and then I'm going to, oh, sorry, I need to pass this. Should we, right now? But I'm going to continue. So the consent agenda, the use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters, which I included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate that item would be considered included separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. So, does anyone have anything that they want from the consent agenda? Okay, so I need a motion to approve items 12.01 to 12.11.
Motion to approve items 12.01 to 12.11.
Comments or questions?
So the, you said...
So the, you said, you mentioned there were changes, those changes are part of that motion?
Well, there's, I'm actually using, there, I don't know. There's also a 13 that has some of the changes, so we'll do that separately.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, need a motion to approve item 13.01 and 13.02, intended to the personnel list.
Do we read them for the roll call or not?
Do we need to read them?
With the item segments?
Yes.
But there's two segments.
Okay, so 13.01, I need a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Second.
And any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then, any motion to approve 13.02, intended to the instructional personnel list?
Motion.
Second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Do we need a second exec?
Do we need a second exec?
If there's not a motion for a second, I need a motion for adjournment.
Okay, any motion, are you motioning to adjourn?
Yes.
A second?
A second.
Comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is it, because my table has a lot of slides.